... two, we'll call the regular city council meeting of March 6th, 2017 order. We do have a quorum, let's please stand and pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All individuals are asked to either silence or turn off cell phones, pages, or other electronic devices that may disrupt the meeting. Approve of the agenda, approve the agenda and post, as posted in accordance with open meeting law. And here I place all agenda items on the table for discussion. And I would like to move the presentation by Mr. David Drone up to the presentation portion of it, and we'll act on it later. So with that, would anybody make a motion to approve the agenda? Second. Got a motion by Alderman Hercock, second by Councilman Hanson, to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign. Motion carries approval of the minutes, a copy of the minutes for the special work session meeting of February 21st, 2017, and the regular meeting of February 21st, 2017 are enclosed. What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion by Alderman Hercock, second by Councilman Lowdrin, for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign. Motion carries approval of the bills, checks number 95914 through 95969 totaling $276,009.26. What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Gushak, second by Councilmember Lundberg, for approval of the bills. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign. Motion carries awards, donations, presentation, proclamations, presentation. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, the Sons of the American Legion received some national recognition, and I would like to read this and then introduce them, and if you'd come forward, hopefully the record will take a picture. Sons of the American Legion Squadron Forty-Six's city flag project was nationally recognized in the National Update, the official publication of the Sons of the American Legion. Publication is sent out to 400,000 members nationwide. This project began in 2006 with the Sons of the American Legion donating U.S. flags for placement on streetlights from 13th Avenue Northeast to 8th Avenue Southeast, and from 13th Street West to 19th Street East. City Street Department staff places and maintains over 100 U.S. flags through the summer and the fall. Here tonight, representing the Sons of the American Legion Squadron Forty-Six, if you would step forward when I introduce you, please, Commander Randy Nyquist, First Vice Butch Zimmerman, Adjutant L. Stensel, Finance Steve White, Chaplain Trent Iverson, Sergeant-at-Arms Greg Santima. We don't have an award for me to present, but I'd love to have you guys come forward Congratulations, and you've done a great job, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, presentation, David?
Good evening, council. Construction work is virtually completed on last year's petition for projects. It seemed like a fairly restrained year. The ending dollar amount of the project was in round numbers $900,000. City Council assessed roughly a third of that, and is our practice for large projects like this, particularly with assessments that we finance on long-term through the issuance of bonds. We've probably done this every year or so for the last 20 years. The mechanism we follow will be the same as we've always done. The debt will be paid over 15 years, which is the term of the special assessments associated with the project. We'll purchase a Moody's rating. At current market interest rates, we're expecting interest rates of less than 3% on this money, okay? That's going to mean annual payments of roughly 70 grand, and the portion that's not covered by special assessments should be a little over 40. I think the county's preliminary budget put in about $90,000 of levy dollars for this, which means in future years, you ought to be able to cut that levy amount in half, okay? Usually, on dollar amounts of this size, we recommend you sell bonds competitively, which means council will set a date in the future to take bids. We tabulate the bids, show up, tell you which was the best bid, and you'd have the ability to award a contract on the sale of bonds. That can be accomplished if we start this evening, that would be ready for your second meeting next month, the second meeting in April, which I believe is the 17th. Item two would be that periodically your bonds become callable, which makes them easy to pay off or refinance, and every couple of years, we seem to have a batch of refundings. Your last really high debt came, high interest rate debt, came due or callable on February, okay? It is bonds we did back in '09. We actually took about seven or eight small pieces of remnants of bonds that were left over at that time, squashed them in together into a $4 million refunding, and I recall saving $307,000 by doing that. Oddly enough, there's still $2.8 million of that bond issue still outstanding. It's carrying an interest rate of about a little under 4%, and rates on terms of this debt should put us point and a half lower than that. If we were to refinance after all costs, I would project we'd see savings of something like $150,000. You have a second bond issue, was a tax increment bond that was done for Walgreens, also back in '09, same story, interest rates a little bit higher, the dollar amount of the bonds is a little under $400,000, but if we were to refinance that by throwing that bond issue in the same mix, we'd be looking at saving another 70. So by refunding after expenses, we'd be looking at a savings of somewhere in the range of $200,000 to $225,000. Since we're going to the expense of a public bond sale anyhow, and the purchase of a rating, I think it makes all the sense in the world to include a refunding of all of this old debt into that process, take bids, and if we save the money, I think we save, we could award the sale of refunding bonds at the same time. So my recommendation to you is late, when you get to the item in your agenda this evening, we should start the process to issue the debt for last year's petition projects, and at the same time authorize us to issue potential refunding debt for the other bonds in hopes of saving future debt service expense in excess of $200,000. We have that sale on the 17th of next month, we'll tabulate results, and we'll discuss which portion or all of that to award. So need you to start that process by resolution tonight. Questions on that?
Ms. President, I just have a comment. You've done this before, and it's been successful, and saved us hundreds, thousands of dollars, and I would not see why we wouldn't do it again.
My sense is there's no advantage to wait. My guess is the likelihood of rates going up is a little bit higher than the likelihood of interest rates going down, so I think now's the time to do it.
Any other questions for David?
No, I just read an article about the Fed saying rate hikes are on the table coming up.
How long does this process take, from start to finish?
We could squash it and work very hard, and we could have it ready for your first meeting next month. We're suggesting that we have it at the second meeting. It's been a couple of years since we talked to the rating agencies, and having a little bit of elbow room will help, but if you are vastly concerned, we could amplify the process and try to get it done at your first meeting next month. We're suggesting the second one.
Okay. Any other questions for David?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. On to the consent agenda. We got airport commission minutes, January and February 2017 receive, application for exempt permit and temporary on-sale malt beverage license, Holy Family Church Heritage Fest approve, application for exempt permit and temporary on-sale malt beverage license, Our Lady A-Lord Church Bazaar approve, application for exempt permit, Minnesota Rodeo Association, raffle, Morrison County Fairgrounds approve, building department report, February 2017 receive, library board minutes, February 2017 receive, organizational chart update approve, park, rec, and tree board minutes, February 2017 receive, recycling reports, December 2016, and yearly totals receive, temporary on-sale liquor license, Our Lady A-Lord Church Centennial approve. What is the wish of the council on the consent?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Gushak, second by Mayor Zilka, to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign. Motion carries public hearings and lettings, public hearing, cable TV franchise, charter, communications input. John?
City Administrator is in a meeting right now, so I believe that tonight, the request is that we have the public hearing on the cable franchise agreement. It's something that is required for us to have when we're doing the negotiations with the cable company.
Any questions from council? Hearing none, we'll move on to the public comment. If you wish to speak, raise your hand and stand. Council President will call you and recognize you. Typically, individuals are allowed to speak up to two minutes, and should be germane and concise, and further shall not exceed two times with a maximum of two minute, or two appearances, all right? Anyone from the public wish to speak?
Yes.
Podium, please, name and address.
I believe you'll know by the end of this. Name's Michael Joseph Hawkins, address 301 Levis Street, Southeast Lot 221, Little Falls, Minnesota. Competition's good. Problem is, is that I've called other companies, cable companies and what have you, that cannot get into Little Falls. AT&amp;T Fund out there, Monopoly, they got gone. What I find ironic is that the government of Little Falls has the same cable people, company, that we, the customers, use, which goes down to Channel 11, when I complained about sinkholes and what have you, water problems up here, all of a sudden emails disappear from them. Ironically, they have Century 2. Now, I'm not saying collusion, I'm not saying anybody's guilty of anything, but it sure is kind of funny when certain coincidences start happening, when Channel 11 loves Little Falls. I've seen statements in their, I've seen statements where they love Little Falls. What bothers me is that when something goes haywire up here, you try to get help from them, they turn around, turn it around, and then the emails disappear, so I have no proof of that except for the ones I sent to them. If that's not collusion or whatever, and you can't tell me that everybody in this town is honest, you can't tell me all this is all straight up, because it's not. You waste 45 minutes on the garbage, when you've got other problems other than that, which includes Century 21, sorry, Century Link. And if you don't believe me, I can prove that one, too.
This is a deal with charter, not Century Link. I don't know if you're aware.
Sorry, that's what I meant. Problem being is that the same one they used on Channel 11, same one you guys use, the whole thing, and when I contact them about the problem, they say, "No, it can't be." They tell me, "Quit using the computer, because somebody is reading it." And they've told me this, my arrows are going all over the place, the whole bit. The only way past it, and I got the security thing, they said there's no way they can get into it. My thing was, yeah, watch the time.
Time's up, thank you.
Yeah, figures.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Yes, I certainly would. At your last public-
Name and address.
Robin Hassel, 807 First Street, Southeast. At your last public hearing on January 17th, 2017, in this very chamber, you allowed Sue Kester, Bruce Mahler, and one other gentleman-
It's anything to do with the-
-to speak almost completely uninterrupted for six minutes, and one of them was over six minutes. Even though your public hearing procedure states, "If you wish to speak, raise your hand or stand, the council president or chairperson will recognize you." Typically, it will be allowed, individuals will be allowed up to two minutes, and should be germane and concise, and further shall not exceed two minutes and maximums of two appearances. At the earlier hearing tonight, I was rudely interrupted. Teresa was going to be disallowed to speak. I had to point out those rules to the mayor, who conducted that hearing. He obviously didn't know the rules of the public hearing procedure, even though it's right here on this table for the public to access, and it's been that way for quite a while. I worked really hard to get my comments to two minutes. If I exceed that, fair warning. You've already violated this gentleman's free speech tonight. How many more will you? My illegal arrest happened in this chamber. Are you ready to risk another?
Absolutely.
And you're not to interrupt the speakers either.
Do you ask to comment?
I want my franchise fees refunded, all the way back to when there was a franchise agreement that expired, May 15th, 2015. The cable franchise renewal public hearing announcement was published before the council accepted the recommendation of the cable review board to hold the public hearing. The hearing announcement was published in the Morrison County Record on 2/19/17, yet it was considered on the council agenda 2/21/17. Item 90 under new business, before the council approved the hearing. This seems to violate the rules councils follow-
Time's up, Robin, thank you.
-are going to disallow, you're going to follow them.
Robin? Your two minutes are up, thank you.
I have six minutes.
You have two minutes, and you're, we're told.
Excuse me.
I just read, before we started, you had two minutes.
I have just as much right in this chamber.
Exactly, you had your two minutes, just like anybody else has. Please sit down.
From a letter-
Robin?
-from City of Little Falls, Bob Voss, Kennedy, and Braver.
Ms. Hensel, please, take your seat.
Eight, 2012.
Do we need to have you remove, Ms. Hensel?
Chapter 238.
Does anybody else want to speak?
Addresses cable matters, franchise renewal-
Anyone else wish to speak?
-so only by federal law. Under federal law-
Robin, please take your chair. We have other people that want to speak.
You asked Sue Kester to sit down, why not? You didn't ask Bruce Mahler to sit down, why not? Why me? Why am I different than both of them? And the other gentleman that stood right behind me at that meeting.
Okay, I think I can speak now that Robin is done rambling along. My name is John Saner, 1401 River You Drive, Little Falls. I'm a user of Charter for phone, internet, and TV. If we don't have Charter, what do we have here? I don't want to be faced with a satellite that goes out under bad weather conditions. I'm a happy user. We use the TV probably eight hours a day on average, in the winter time. In the summertime, we don't use it that much, because we're outside until about 10 o'clock at night. But what others do we have available in town, other than Charter? I don't know. So if we have other options, I'd like to hear about it. I haven't seen anything in the paper of any other options, so what are we going to do without Charter? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I would like to speak, please.
Go ahead. Name and address.
Teresa Forso, 209 First Avenue, Southeast, 415. I believe that the city should press Spectrum Charter to circulate a survey to all customers to evaluate customer satisfaction. The responses to that survey should be returned to Spectrum, but often should go to the city. It is imperative that the city, who represents us, get a copy of all the responses. I suspect that the city does not want to know if its subscribers have complaints. For example, the city has not provided a complaint telephone number for subscribers to register their complaints about Spectrum service, and this is required by Minnesota statute 238.115, which says, "A cable communication system holding a franchise to provide cable communications services in any area of the state must immediately provide a consumer complaint telephone number to any person who calls the system or its agent and asks for a consumer complaint number. That number must be the telephone number of a person or agency that is unaffiliated with the cable company and is organized to provide assistance to complaining customers." I've been watching the money with this cable system since Jerry Abrams left, and most subscribers of Spectrum Charter are not aware, probably, that $4 out of their cable bill that we pay every month goes to the city of Little Falls and franchise fees and pay fees. That's about $48 per household per year, and I understand there are about 2,000 households in Little Falls area which subscribe to Spectrum Charter. That amounts to $96,000 a year that goes to the city, from us, the customers of Spectrum. And that $96,000, we're supposed to be able to depend on the city to keep Spectrum in line, to address our complaints and concerns, and to see if we're getting what we paid for. And what I'd like from you is either to compensate how you used my $48 to serve my interests, or I'd like to have that $48-
Time's up, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Yes, I certainly would, if no one else is wanting to speak.
Would you mind taking the podium? You could stand there for two minutes and videotape. I don't think your disability would require your-
I'm sitting here because you have other people to speak in the audience.
Thanks for all your cooperation, it's well appreciated.
Under federal law, a cable company must request renewal in writing during a six-month period from 36 to 30 months prior to expiration. The current franchise was granted in 2000 for a number of four years, with an 11-year extension of Charter upgraded the system. The franchise expires in 2015 because Charter upgraded. Accordingly, Charter will request renewal of this franchise in a few months. Within six months of that request, the city must commence proceeding, which didn't happen in 2012. It's happening tonight, and only because I had the badger of the city to get them to do this. That gives the public notice and opportunity to participate. Perhaps if the city had followed Bob Voss's legal advice, which was paid by taxpayer dollars to hire him, the city would have a franchise agreement already, as does the city of Little Falls, or excuse me, St. Cloud, rather. Even though the taxpayers funded the bill to pay Bob Voss to advise the city the city cable franchise renewal, they never followed his advice. Even the public announcement in the city newspaper for this public hearing was a sham, reading only, quote, "To consider the renewal of cable TV franchise with communications," unquote, instead of the real purpose of the hearing, as stated by attorney Bob Voss in 2012, quote, "The purpose of this proceeding is to review the company's franchise compliance, the past performance, and number two, identify the community's future cable-related needs and interests. This review is the source of the city's leverage," unquote. So in negotiations, there is leverage to consumer complaints, which you have never heard until tonight. John Rodmacher quoted in that same article, saying, in the Morrison County Record, quote, "It may be useful for us to hold another public hearing to see if there are any differences in the information we can gather on this franchise renewal," unquote. Why not all that I just mentioned above? Why didn't our city administrator let cable Spectrum customers know how-
Time's up, thank you.
-this meeting was?
Anyone else wish to speak?
Do we know that you have violated my free speech once again?
Thank you for the information. Taken under consideration. Anyone else wish to speak?
I have a letter from a person from the west side who couldn't be here, Clifton G. Evans. He asked me if I'd read it, concerning the public hearing of Charter Communications. He said, "Thank you for accepting this letter in lieu of my personal appearance, as I'm unable to attend this public hearing." Sorry. February 26th edition of the record reports that city administrator John Rodmacher has mentioned forcing Charter out, and council member Raquel Lundberg has questioned cable use, stating, "I know a lot of people don't even watch TV. I understand there is no cost to the city for Charter Communications to provide its resident service. Further, there is no obligation for residents to contract that service, so only those using the service pay for it. Points provided in line two have no relevance to forcing Charter out. I want to keep my cable TV and high-speed internet service. As my service affects no one else, I suggest that they just mind their own business. As an example, I'd like to point out that I have not used a landline telephone for over a decade, but someone else's choice to have one in their home is not my concern. If the city council chooses to further pursue this non-issue, it needs also to investigate the motivation and possible special interests of those who pursue such action." And then it goes on to say, "Respectfully, Clifton Evans." Clifton Evans, Cliff Evans.
Cliff Evans, okay, thank you.
This time, I'll close the public hearing. Do we need any action?
Not at this time.
No action? Engineering and pavilion, Little Falls Arc Complex. Greg?
Before this evening, you have a, an item on the agenda for a pavilion out at the Arc Complex. In 2015, Burlington Northern granted the city $25,000 to go towards bathrooms out there. At the time, we were estimating the bathrooms were going to cost about $100,000. We were not able to raise any additional funds, other than from Knife River, which was, I believe, either $2,000 or $3,000 towards concrete, but we weren't able to raise enough funds to cover the cost of a bathroom out there for a future splash pad. So we got in contact with BNSF to see if they were willing to allow us to use those funds for something else, such as a pavilion, as opposed to a full-blown bathroom at that location. They indicated that, yes, they were willing to allow us to use those funds for something else, so after discussions with the park board, we decided on a, to recommend going forward with a pavilion. It does not conflict with the master plan, which I'll kind of show up here in a little bit, and the size is about 20 by 34. If you look at the ones over at the Lindbergh Lions Rec Complex on the west side, that one is about 30 by 60, so it's a much smaller scale than what we have there, but we wanted to try to keep it within that amount of money that we had available to us to work with that $25,000. We've been looking at this for quite some time. The reason that it's taken so long to get to the council for approval is because we purchased off of the state bid. MINDOT goes out for bids on various projects or various components, whether it's pavilions, whether it's trucks, and we're able to purchase off of that, because they, they're able to do the competitive bidding for us. They did not have that, that contract in place until now. They've been working on the fine details of it, and so it's finally in place. To give you an idea of what that would look like, you can see behind me, this is the structure that we'd be looking at. It does not have electricity, sewer water, anything like that.
I don't think that's going to work.
Not like that one.
Awesome, Greg, awesome.
No, it's not going to look like that.
At least it's not blue.
It would be blue, to complement the slide and the structure, or the color scheme that's already out there. I'm not sure what it's doing. My computer froze up anyways. So tonight, we are looking at approval of that. We are looking at $17,459.13 for the pavilion itself, an additional $1,250 for a structural engineer to certify the drawings. Because it is a public space, we do need structural, or structural engineer to sign off on that. City staff will, will construct the building, and that will all go towards the grant that BNSF has awarded us. Any questions?
Questions for Greg?
You would think that if they sell these pavilions to cities, that structural engineer's component would be part of what they sell.
In the MINDOT bid, it was not a requirement of the bid, so they did not include it in there. They knew that it was part of it, but because of the specs that MINDOT put out, they didn't have it in there, just to be competitive with everybody else.
Well, if MINDOT has their own structural engineer, and they'll save the cost.
True. True, true. Still not working.
And this is going to come in with install under our $25,000?
That is correct, yes.
Because we had a grant for some concrete as well.
Yes, we did. Yep. Knife River was kind enough to donate for that.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by council member Gushick, second by council member Lildgren. Any discussion? Made it. So it's just going to be a four-post or six-post like it's there?
Six-post like it is there. Yep. Yep. Basically identical to this, with the exception, the columns in the roof on top will be a darker blue. The underside is still a white. That's standard. Obviously, the picnic tables and stuff don't come with it, but essentially that same type of looking structure.
Is that just liquid paint or powder coated?
That's powder coated.
Is it a tin roof on there?
It does. It's steel, but yes.
I think that'll be a nice addition to, you know, everything looks a little bare out there, provide a little more shade.
Little more shade, little more area for people to do have gatherings and such.
So I got a motion on the table. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Handicap parking request, install, approve. Greg?
Yeah, we received two petitions, or the councils received two petitions for the handicap parking stall over on First Street and First Avenue, right across from the police department. Tonight, we are asking the council for approval of that additional handicap spot. We've talked about this, I believe it was about a month ago, we kind of talked a little bit about it. Just looking at the clientele and the individuals that are going to the businesses over there, it makes sense to have that second handicap spot in that location. I know the one business has a temporary one right now. We would be requesting that back, so it would just be a permanent handicap stall on the First Avenue side across from the police department.
What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Got a motion by council member Hanson, second by Alderman Hercock. For approval? Any discussion? Greg, I just made the comment that we'll be requesting it for back. Can't we make that part of this deal?
We can.
That it's going to be...the other one's going to be revoked?
Yes.
So there's not three on that corner?
Correct. Yes.
After hearing Chief Shermer's and everything, all the input, I'm going to vote in favor for this. I think it's a good idea.
Well, basically, you'd just be moving the one that's a temporary around the corner to the ped ramp where it's an easier access? And make it a permanent instead of a temporary?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. New business, accept recommendation of the EDA authority, ordinance number ninety-four, six series, sale of property, Kush Properties LLC. Introduce. Laurie?
The EDA met earlier tonight, and the city owns the Clark...the old Clark Station property, which is adjacent to the Morrison County Record that was cleaned up. We did advertise it for sale. We did receive some offers on the property. The EDA then went into negotiations with Lori Kush for Kush Properties, and she offered, and the EDA agreed to recommend to the city council that the property be sold to her for $18,000. And then, in...under the circumstance that she built on the lot, within two years, she did have an architect going and looking. Her building will fit on that lot because it is a little bit odd-shaped, so her building will fit on there as she wants to build it, so she is ready to move forward with that. So the EDA is recommending that the city sell that lot to Kush Properties for $18,000.
Do I have a motion to introduce?
It's all moved.
And introduced by Mayor Zilka.
Second.
Don't we just introduce? It was just one motion to introduce. We'll have action on it next meeting. Accept recommendation of the EDA Development Authority, continue resolution twenty-seventeen dash thirteen, support Economic Development Authority application, Minnesota Investment Fund, Wabash National Corp. Laurie, you want to take that one?
Sure. So earlier tonight, the EDA held two public hearings on the MiF investment fund application, and then also a business subsidy for Wabash National Corporation. Both the EDA and the RDFA, the Rural Development Finance Authority, met earlier tonight as well. Both of them are approved business subsidy and a MiF grant application for Wabash. One of the requirements of the grant is that we get a resolution in support, that the EDA have a resolution of support from the city council to apply for that grant. So this resolution would be that resolution of support for the grant application.
What's the wish of the council on resolution twenty-seventeen dash thirteen?
I'll make a motion. We adopt resolution twenty-seventeen dash thirteen. Second.
Got a motion by council member Hanson, second by council member Lildgren. To approve resolution twenty-seventeen dash thirteen. Any discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call or roll.
Hercock?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hanfler?
Yes.
Lildgren?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Carries.
Accept recommendations of Airport Commission, Public Works Director. We got task order number one.
Task order number one is an environmental assessment review or reevaluation out at the airport. We did a environmental assessment, I believe it was about four and a half years ago, for the crosswind runway. And essentially, what we'll be looking at doing is changing that crosswind. Currently, it's at an angle, and so we'd be looking at making it basically due north and due south at the airport. And so this evaluation then will review any new species that are endangered out at the airport. And so, let me get this up. Essentially, what it would do is convert it from this grass configuration right here, which is about five degrees off north-south, to straight due north, north and south. We are asking council approval in the amount of twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars and one cent. There's a couple of new species that have been listed as endangered that we have to evaluate for. One's a long-eared bat. The other one is the rusty patch bumbleweed, I think, or bumblebee. And I thought there was one more. I can't remember off the top of my head what it is. But we will have to do this before we move forward with any sort of construction out there. They are good for five years, and so tonight, we would be asking the council for approval for task order number one in the amount of twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars and one cent to be charged to the Airport Improvement Fund.
What's the wish of the council?
I make a motion to accept and approve.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zilka, second by council member Gushick. For approval of task order one. Any discussion?
The way a lot of the airport expenses work with shared responsibility, is this just our portion, or is this the whole thing?
This is the whole thing. So our portion, the local share is $1,250. Half of that is ours, so $675.
Thank you.
Sounds better, huh?
Way better.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Capital Improvement Plan, accept. Greg?
Yep. In your packet this evening, you've got the five-year capital improvement plan for the airport. Essentially, it lays out the projects within the next five years, all of this working towards the construction of the crosswind runway. We'd be looking at having a paved runway as opposed to a grass turf runway that it currently is. By doing that, you will allow better wind coverage for landing out at the airport. Going from memory, there's about a 92% wind coverage right now with the paved runway. You'd be looking at greater than 95%, which is where you'd desirably like to be at. I believe, once we get that paved, you're closer to that 98%, which is obviously better. If someone's flying, you want to make sure that they can land at the airport. One of the interesting things that I've recently found out is they did an economic impact study out at the airport. MNDOT's got a little calculator that you can evaluate how many flights in and out and what that benefit has to the community. For our Little Falls Airport, that benefit is about 600 and some thousand dollars per year towards the community. So obviously, it's an asset to the community. We want to make sure that we hang onto it and improve it as best we can to make sure that people, as well as businesses that are flying in and out, are able to use that as much as possible. So again, just tonight, looking for concurrence that we'd be...that you're in favor of it, that the...and I'll talk to the county board that they're in favor of it, because the next five years is really when we're going to be starting to spend some dollars in order to make that a reality.
What's the wish of the council on the capital improvement plan?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Go ahead.
I'll second.
Second. Got a motion by Alderman Hercock, second by council member Gushick. Any discussion?
Mr. President, if I could ask Greg to...my favorite question that you usually get on the dollars, federal dollars, that typically support 90 to 95% of this, like you broke down...
Correct.
...recently. Would you explain where most or all those dollars come from, the federal dollars?
The federal dollars come from the gas tax, the highway gas tax, as well as the fuel sales out at the airport. So it's basically using those funds to put back into the infrastructure that's out there. And the FAA contributes generally in 90-10 split. There are other components, depending on where it's at on the airport, but there's a huge component of federal funds that go into the projects, as we saw at the previous item. And so it's very attractive to...for the local share to do those projects because it is an asset to the community, and the local share is pretty small when you look at the grand scheme of things.
Greg, doesn't that federal dollars also include airplane tax, our air fuel?
Yes, air fuel, as well as the trust, the Highway Trust Fund.
Thank you.
Can I just ask on our chart, because there was an FAA share and there's an FAA entitlement balance?
Yep. Every year, we get the...we being the airport, we get $150,000 towards airport improvements. And so we can use those funds for various products, projects, and that, like on the right-hand side, you'll see that that dollar amount starts dropping pretty quick, once you get into calendar year 2018, when we really start looking at those funds. Right now, we are maxed out at the $450,000 mark, because that's all you're allowed to keep is three years' worth of funds in there. We can use those towards projects, crack ceiling, you'll notice there's a number of items in there. And they allow you to use those funds for their FAA shares. So like, on the environmental assessment, you'll see the total cost is $25,000, the FAA share is $2250. That came out of the entitlement. It's the local entity's discretion as to where that's coming, and the feds will say what's eligible. So in this case, 90% of it is eligible, and you can use those entitlement funds towards that.
So we get into the construction phase in year 19 and 20, that's other dollars they're going to use to contribute towards that as well?
Yep. If you look in the remarks onto the right-hand side, you'll see the state apportionment. So right now, the state has kind of a list of projects that they're looking at five years out, and Little Falls is listed on there as state apportionment in both 19 and 20. So it's in our interest to move forward with this because they've kind of have a line item for it. That's the first step to making sure that you can get some state funds to construct it, because it will be...it'll be a multimillion-dollar construction project once we undertake that.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Resolution twenty-seventeen dash fourteen, installation of stop sign, Fifth Avenue Southeast. Greg?
This evening, we're asking the council for permanent installation of stop signs on Fifth Avenue and Ninth Street. We put those up as part of the temporary review of the traffic around the high school and the Ninth Street project over there. What we noticed, when we put them up even before the other traffic control was up in terms of the one-way, is that it actually started to make the other traffic control around the area work a little bit better. You know, we're always concerned about the unintended consequences of doing something. When we put those up, we actually started seeing a benefit that we weren't really expecting to see. One of the benefits that we noticed is that there wasn't as much of a backup on Ninth Street because the traffic on Fifth Avenue had to stop, and it allowed people to flow through there a little bit easier. In addition to that, there has been usually backups on the 11th Street and the Highway 27, as you go around the high school and up to the Highway 27 area by the middle school. Without those stop signs, there was quite a few people backed up at those stoplights and through there, and so it was making it difficult for people coming out of the middle school parking lot to get into that queue for the stoplights. Well, by spacing traffic a little bit more with the stop signs, it allowed those stoplights to actually work a lot better. The first day that we looked at them, there was, I think, five or six cars continuously stacked up, and then that would block the middle school exit. Once we put up the stop signs, there was only about three or four, so you could still get the people out of there that were picking up those kids at the middle school. Another benefit that we noticed is, you know, coming from the east, going to the west, coming down that hill, it actually encouraged people to slow down coming down that hill. Normally, we don't like to use stop signs as speed control, but I noticed that, you know, coming down that hill when you were driving, you don't really pay attention to your speed. And so by having to stop at that stop sign at Ninth Street, then you slowed your speed down, and then you kept going again. So I don't know if, Chief Shermer, if you want to add anything to that, but tonight, we are asking councils for approval to permanently put those stop signs in there. It does meet our policy number 38 for the stop signs, but we're asking for formal approval on that tonight.
I did spend some...quite a bit of time over there with Greg and the school staff as well, and I do very much...I am very much in favor of the stop signs there as well. We've put radar speed signs over there before, and as Greg said, we don't want to use stop signs for speed control, but it has had many other benefits besides just slowing traffic down. As Greg mentioned, other traffic control devices are better able to handle the traffic that is presented to them. We're getting...the kids at the school are...we're beginning to self-regulate, I would use the word. They'll leave school a little later because they know there's going to be congestion, so it's had a larger effect as well. The kids will wait a few more minutes till some of that traffic moves out, and then they'll come out a few minutes later. We did see some of that as well, so I think it's had many benefits.
So there's already a stop sign on Ninth Avenue, or Ninth Street?
Ninth Street.
So you'd be putting two stop signs on Fifth Avenue, so it would be a three-way stop then?
They're already there.
I know, but permanently.
We did not take them down yet, but officially, we do need council approval to put them in or to keep them in permanently. So if it's voted out or down tonight, then we would take those signs out of there. When we saw how good they were doing as of a job, we decided to leave them up as opposed to take them down, wait a week, and come back to you and say, "Can we have them up there?"
I spoke with Officer Stump, the school resource officer as well, and he had commented on them today as well to me, that he saw a positive benefit around the school because of those stop signs.
Did you see the kids having a tendency to race out of the parking lot, to beat the traffic? No? It was the opposite, I think.
And we'll see that a little bit later this evening on the...I've got video from the Friday before the traffic control went up, the first day that it went up, and then the fourth day that it was up. And you'll be able to see it. It's not as if they were racing out of the parking lot to try to beat anything. It actually made it smooth going through there in terms of getting onto Fifth Avenue. There wasn't a whole lot of traffic issues that we saw once we had that up.
I just had someone I asked about it. It was the first or second day, and he felt people were trying to cut other people off more in the parking lot, but I've asked him since then as well, and he said that it took him just a little while to get used to it, and he thought it was better.
The first two or three days were pretty difficult, but after the kids and the other traffic, because their parents coming in there too to pick up their kids, once everyone and the buses, we had difficulties with the buses as well. everyone, and the buses, we had difficulties with the, the buses as well, but it took about two or three days, and then everything got really smooth, and it worked very well. There was an adjustment period, though.
The day that I sat off to the side with Brad, they were very respectful, and I was, I was actually a little surprised the way they were merging nicely in the parking lot, and as they came out, they stopped, it was, you know, we didn't have a, we weren't in a police car to intimidate them. And then, we went up to the, our, we were looking down toward the stop signs, and I was surprised how well it flowed out of there.
Right.
And then, we went over to the stoplight for a while, and I didn't see more than three cars lined up there, which rather amazed me, because it seems like whenever I get to that stoplight by Coburn's, I'm like fifth, and I'm, seems like I'm waiting twenty minutes, so maybe when you're not waiting, it doesn't seem as long, but I was surprised at how well it flowed out of there. I thought it went great.
When I was over there also, I made sure that my squad car was not visible. I didn't want that to be a factor, so we parked it away, or I didn't bring it at all, so.
Did you wear a mustache?
Put a disguise on, yes.
What's the wish of the council on resolution twenty seventeen dash fourteen?
I'll make a motion that we adopt twenty seventeen dash fourteen.
Second.
Got a motion by Alderman Hercock, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just, being in that neighborhood, and traffic uses it other than the school, so the school year's, what, approximately a hundred and seventy-two days a year?
True.
And I don't think the mornings are a problem. It's the afternoon, so we're talking of a twenty, thirty-minute problem for less than half of the days a year, and at ten o'clock at night, when there's another, not another car on the road, it's a three-way stop for no good reason. I don't, we talk about traffic as a body sometime, and as somebody who travels across the country and sees real traffic, we don't have a traffic problem here, I can assure you. I'm not in favor of the sign.
I'm in favor of the sign. There's other nights, you know, after basketball games and prom, and, I mean, there's more days than a hundred and seventy-two days. The schools are used quite a bit, every Saturday, most Sundays. I think it'll be a benefit for out there, and I'll go with the recommendation of the chief.
I was kind of on the same page as Leif on this whole deal. It's kind of the cart in front of the horse, until we're going to decide what we're going to do with Ninth Street, why we're implementing half of the project, and instead of waiting, waiting till we get it.
Whether we go with the project, like we've talked about it with Ninth Street, or we don't do anything, I think this is beneficial, just spacing them out a little bit at the end of the day.
That was our perspective on it as well, is whether or not Ninth Street goes forward. It, it made sense from, from a traffic control and traffic standpoint for, from us, to put the stop signs up there.
One other thing, I thought Fifth Avenue there too is kind of one of the wraparounds to keep the traffic moving, to get them from First Avenue to twenty-seven, but that's not, that's not a state aid road, correct?
Fifth Avenue's a state aid road, yes, yes.
So, I thought state aid roads are trying to, supposed to try to limit stop signs where not nee, you know?
Well, I mean, we've already got stoplight, stop signs on Second, we've got stop signs at Fourth.
Well, Fourth is a state aid road too, going north and south, correct?
County road.
It's a county.
Yep. So, I mean, we've, we do have stop signs on there, and just from the benefits that we saw from that, that traffic test, it, it seems to make sense to, to move forward with the stop signs. That was our, our perspective on it.
I do want a sign at Fourth Street, for the record. I've got, I've lost count of how many crashes I've seen in twenty years there.
Well, thank you, Ninth, Ninth Street, day and through.
It's T.
It's T. Any other discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call a roll, please.
Gushick?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hanfler?
No.
Liljagren?
Yes.
Hanson?
No.
Hercock?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution twenty seventeen dash fifteen, letter of intent and submittal of grant, Initiative Foundation, feasibility study, Memorial Bridge.
This evening, we're asking the council for permission to send in a letter of intent for a grant through the Initiative Foundation. The grant would be for the feasibility report for the Trunk Highway twenty-seven Memorial Bridge, the at-grade crossing with the BNSF tracks. If you recall, back in October of twenty sixteen, we did talk about the, the Memorial Bridge in terms of possibly including that in our, our budget for twenty seventeen. We did get that on the vital projects through Region Five, and so we're, we're optimistic that this will help us get some additional grant funds for, for that, for that project. We are going to ask for the ten thousand dollars from, from the Initiative Foundation, if they will grant it towards us, but we'd like to at least try and, and see if we're able to get those, those funds to help offset some of the costs towards that feasibility report.
What's the wish of the council?
I make a motion to adopt resolution two zero one seven dash one five.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Lundberg, for approval of resolution twenty seventeen dash fifteen. Any discussion?
Can you tell us exactly what the feasibility study will tell us?
It will tell us what options we have for crossing those tracks. Right now, BNSF and the Federal Rail Authority have conducted studies, one of each, and don't quote me on which one's number two and which one's number four, but we're listed as number four on one of them, and listed number two on the other one. One is for the accident predictability at that crossing. The other one is grade crossings of, of importance. So, how important that crossing is to getting crude oil from the oil fields to, to refining, we're either number two or number four on that, and the other one is the accident predictability. Again, both of those numbers are, they're in our favor, but they're not where we want it to be. You don't want to be high on those numbers, because it means there's a problem. And so, because we're so high on both of them, we have a good chance of getting funding for construction of some sort of a bridge, if we could possibly go over it, but this feasibility report will help us find out what options there are for going over that, if we can go over that, that crossing.
Greg, that's similar to what Sock Rapids did, correct?
Yes, very similar to that.
Didn't we already approve a feasibility study for this?
No. We wanted to include it in the twenty seventeen budget, but then when we found out that it was on Region Five's vital projects, we pulled that off to see if we could try to get some grant.
Okay, so this is to apply for the grant and, and do the study?
This is to apply for the grant. Right now, we would have to approve the, the study at some other future time, once we get all the funds available, but I'm optimistic and hopeful that we'll be able to get the, the grant funds from Region, or from the Initiative Foundation.
Do we have any kind of ballpark at all on the price of a bridge? I know you didn't the last time I asked, I mean, are we talking ten million, fifty million, a hundred million? I mean, what?
I could get you in the ballpark, it's probably going to be about thirty million. But it's going to depend on the alignment, it's going to depend on how much extra work we're going to have to do in terms of how high we go, how long we go. There's a lot of variables in that, but thirty million is not out of, out of the realm of possibilities.
Okay, and we would anticipate what type of state or federal participation on that?
I don't have a percentage, but it would be quite high. I know government, or Governor Dayton's very, one of his high priorities is rail crossings, and this is right up that alley with, with rail crossings in terms of the, the crude oil and the accident predictability. So, it favors well on the state level. It also favors well on the federal level, because they also had that, that study that had ours as either the number two or number four. So, we fare very well on both of those, those lists, both the federal and the state level, because of where, where we sit on those lists.
So, you know, and recall too, this is getting, there are plans in the works for repairs to the bridge to, in the future, taking place.
Yep.
And as, as those stand, the, MINDOT will only do what they're asked, only do replace the bridge as is. I mean, until we come up with an alternative plan that has community support, buy-in, we identify other funding resources that we can, can have, other partnerships, that our community stands behind, an alternative to what it is that they have there, they're just going to replace it as, as it is. So, if we're not going to do, we need to do our due diligence, figure out what those costs are going to be, figure out what the best plan option is going to be, what's going to have the most community support, what's going to be the best solution for us as a community. We're going to need that before we go and stand in front of the state and say, hey, this, we've done our work, we're going to commit this much money, we've done, we've committed this much time, this much energy, this much effort into this project, we need your support, because it's the right thing to do for the state, it's the right thing to do for our community too. So, we have objective knowledge that they know our, our crossing is dangerous, and, but they're not going to do anything until we've presented a reason for them why.
So, that's why we need the feasibility study?
Correct.
This is, this is really the first, the first steps to, to understanding what, what are your options? And then, from there, you, you do a lot more. You, you work with the community, you set meetings, you get input, you get, figure out how this is going to work, how it's going to be safer, and then you start identifying who are the resources and partners that we can, we can attract to help make it happen. It's going to be expensive, it's going to be time-consuming, it's, but it's going to, in the end, be better for our community, as I believe it ended up being for Sock Rapids.
It did, yes.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call a roll.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hanfler?
Yes.
Liljagren?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Carries.
Mercury minimization plan, wastewater treatment, approved?
This is a fun one. Just kidding. All right. In front of you tonight, we have the mercury minimization plan for the wastewater treatment plant. As part of our permit, we have to inventory and try to identify where all of the mercury that comes to our plant is coming from. I will say, there's not a whole lot coming to it, but nonetheless, we still need to identify it and, and try to reduce that. As you probably know, with mercury, it just continues to accumulate when you go up the food chain, and so, the MPCA is, is taking the stance, we want to make sure we minimize how much mercury gets in the water to start with. So, as part of our permit, we are required to conduct a mercury minimization plan, which we have in front of you, which kind of identifies how much mercury we receive from all of our users, whether it's industrial users or residential users, and then how much we're able to take out of that waste stream before we discharge into the, into the Mississippi River. Not a lot more than, than that. We will have to update it every, every year, and keep taking steps in terms of, of reductions, but there's only so much you can do with the mercury minimization in terms of where thing, where it's coming from, whether it's from an industry, it can be even airborne, but obviously, you can't, can't remove that. So, right now, the first step is to tally how much we, we have coming in, we've got that, we've got to submit it to the MPCA for their review and approval, and then we'll be looking at, at steps for, for next year, which is going to be identifying who is discharging mercury to, to the city system, even though I, it's minimal, and so we, there's probably only going to be one or two that we're going to be able to identify, that may have the potential to reduce it.
What's the wish of the council?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
I got a motion by Alderman Hercock, second by Councilman Gushick, to approve the mercury minimization plan. Any discussion?
It looked like in the numbers, when the pre-treatment thing changed at ethanol plant, it dropped a lot.
Yes, yep.
They have some removal process of their own?
Well, as I had stated, you know, there is mercury in a number of areas, dust is one of them, and so, out at the, out at the ethanol plant, they actually have an evaporation tower, and so, as dust comes into that system, it gets collected in their evaporation tower, which then goes into their waste stream. So, with they, when they were able to take that and recycle it, they're able to trap that mercury in their own system, as opposed to sending it to us. That honestly will be one of the biggest generators, is just the dust in the air that we have for, for mercury, and there's really no way to, to get that out, other than the process that we currently have. So, the MPCA wants us to basically identify those areas we are able to, to identify it, that'll actually be in next year's report, but that's, that's the reason why that reduction is there.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Apoast, same sign. Motion carries. Resolution twenty, two thousand seventeen dash sixteen, authorized negotiated sale of general obligation, permanent improvement revolving fund bonds, series twenty seventeen A. Laurie?
As we heard earlier this evening from David Drown, he, we are recommending the sale of bonds to pay for our twenty sixteen petition projects. The issue will be about eight hundred and eighty-five thousand. This resolution would allow us to go out for competitive negotiated sale of the bonds.
What's the wish of the council?
I make a motion to approve resolution two zero one seven dash sixteen.
Zach, head.
Got a motion by Councilmember Gushick, second by Mayor Zilka, for approval of resolution twenty seventeen dash sixteen. Discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call a roll.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hanfler?
Yes.
Liljagren?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution twenty seventeen seventeen, authorized negotiated sale of general obligation refunding bonds, series two thousand seventeen B. Laurie?
Again, as we heard David Drown explain today, when he was going through our bond sale and looking at some of our stuff, there are two bond issues that we can refund. Both of them are callable as of February of this year, so he is recommending that we do some refunding bonds, just over three million dollars, to refund two other issues. By doing this, the intent or the hope is that we'll save between two hundred and two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in interest fees and stuff. The other thing I would mention is that by doing these refunding bonds, we are not extending the length of time for the payments, so they were fifteen years, fifteen-year bonds back in two thousand and nine, so that the, the term or the payment time will stay the same, we aren't going to extend it out over additional years.
Said we aren't.
We are not extending it.
What's the wish of the council?
I move to adopt resolution twenty seventeen dash seventeen.
I'll second it.
Got a motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Councilmember Liljagren, to approve resolution twenty seventeen seventeen. Discussion?
As stated by the mayor earlier, it's benefited us a lot in the past. I can see no reason why we wouldn't do it again. It saves us up to two hundred thousand dollars. We can use that money in a lot of other places.
Even though there's a lot of money in fees, it still saves a lot.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call a roll.
Hanfler?
Yes.
Liljagren?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Carries.
Ninth Street?
Just wanted to give the council an update on what we are looking at for Ninth Street. Bear with me, I've got three, about three-minute videos, just to kind of show you what we are looking at. This is on February tenth, we did have the, the three-way stop installed over here. This was prior to any traffic control going on up on, on Ninth Street, so you can kind of see how the vehicles come out of the Pike, the parking lot, and over and through here. So, if you bear with me, we can, we can witness how that, that goes through. We actually did a count to see how many vehicles actually turned right, there was about ninety-four vehicles that we counted. As we get later on in the video, you'll actually notice there's quite a bit of stacking going on right here, and you'll, you'll see that in the other videos as well, but I was surprised with the, the vehicles coming out of the high school parking lot, how many actually, how long it was actually taking to get through that, that queue, to even get down to the Ninth Street intersection. I do have a letter that I got from the school district today, in front of you as well, regarding the, the Ninth Street project. Their preference is to do a sign over at the, the exit, to limit right turns coming out of there. I don't think that's going to work, but if that's long it was actually taking to get through that queue to even get down to the Ninth Street intersection. I do have a letter that I got from the school district today in front of you as well regarding the Ninth Street project. Their preference is to do a sign over at the exit to limit right turns coming out of there. I don't think that's going to work, but if that's something that they want to try, then I guess they can definitely try that, but I wanted to show you, we did the study, I wanted to show you the results of that, just so that you can make your decision at your next meeting after we get bids on Wednesday. You'll notice the stacking going on down here. It's about, you know, six, eight cars that were stacking there, and this is pretty constant in terms of the number of vehicles that were here, and I was surprised at that number of them over in that area. So while we're going through this, are there any questions about the?
Any movement from that stop sign? There's been no cars, so that person obviously must be a 14-year-old driving.
If it's a 14-year-old, they'd be doing a burnout.
Yeah, it's... Shermerz, were you parked right across the street from there with your lights on or something?
Siren's going.
I've got friends.
The school district has a drone.
I hope to have a license-operated thing and fly that.
You've been flying them over your house.
We can see that parking lot. People ain't there.
It's pretty close to being over now, in terms of the rush coming out of there.
Yeah.
Yeah. I didn't, obviously, I didn't pull the whole video from it. I just took the area that was, you know, most representative of the area, and you'll see that on the other segments as well.
You look at the parking lot, it's three-fourths full yet.
True.
Not many went straight. Did any more go straight?
There were a few that went straight. You'll notice, once we get to the 16th, that there were definitely more going straight, which surprised me quite a bit because I wanted to see where they were going. I'll start this so that we can save time, too. This is the first day that we had this traffic control up. You can see there we're sitting, and then we did have the three-way stop, obviously, on this. This is Monday, the 13th.
They blew that stop sign.
You can tell by the wet area on the pavement.
Oh, people blew that stop sign the first couple days.
By and large, everybody was going south on Ninth Street. There was a few coming to the west, but by and large, most of them were going to the south over to the three-way stop. But again, you can see that first day, there was quite a few vehicles stacked up in here. I think they were even starting up over there. To get in and out of that parking lot, again, like Shermerz and I talked, the kids needed to get adjusted to how this is going to work. There is definitely a learning curve on it, but when you see what happened on the 16th, it went through there actually quite good. You'll notice there's, there shouldn't be anybody going north, which there wasn't, and there were a few coming to the west on that first day, but most of them were going south. You'll notice Ninth Street, there's very little congestion over there, which also helped to the stoplights over on 11th Street, there was very little congestion at that location as well.
There was a lot of confusion and hesitation on the stop sign.
Yep. When we were sitting there, they were mentioning, you know, I've never seen that many complete full stops at that stop sign. It was the first day, we had the police chief there, so the first day, they were making sure they dotted their i's and crossed their t's, which obviously made this a little bit longer than it needed to be, but...
So to me, that makes no sense. When they could go north, they were backed up on Fifth Avenue. Now that they can't go north, they're ain't backed up over there?
Yeah. It's because they're coming out of here a little bit slower than what they were before, you know?
We'd rather have it backed up here than on Fifth Street.
Then, correct.
And that gives the traffic control voices time.
Correct. So what happened on the Friday before is you had a mad rush of people coming out of here. You don't really have a whole lot of people coming from the north, going south on Ninth Street. You've had 100 vehicles going north, and so this is pretty free to turn left, like on that Friday before. So you're getting a lot of vehicles coming over here, trying to get over, going over to the 11th Street lights and getting congestion. By slowing it down right here and backing up the vehicles here, it allowed this intersection to work smoother, as well as the one up on 11th Street to work smoother. Yes, it takes longer to get out of the high school parking lot, but it allows those other two to work a little bit better. So, you know, looking where their traffic patterns are at, you can see from the wet spot on the pavement, they were mostly going to the south. There was a few going to the west that went through that area.
They did it 23 minutes.
On the first day, yep, yeah. And then by the time we got to Thursday, it was down to, I think, 11 minutes.
Were there any issues with the southbound traffic on Ninth Street that you can see there's one right there right now?
Yep.
Coming through the one-way and getting into the traffic?
No, because there's, you know, there's stop signs on all corners at that point.
I think we estimated about a half a minute.
Even less, in terms of from the north?
Yeah.
There were less than that. There wasn't hardly any coming from the north. So this is on February 16th. This is the fourth day that we had that ongoing. Again, you can see from the wet area on the pavement, most of them are going south over to that three-way stop. You can still see, you know, there's about three or four stacked up here, but by and large, this is working pretty smooth. You still have the cars stacked up in through here, but it's getting better. The kids are learning how to go through that section or that area a little bit better. I was personally surprised at the number that were going west, and I did follow a number of them to see where they were going. A lot of them were just going straight west on Third Avenue, and we've got stop signs on every block, but they were going over to Fourth Street, so they were taking that stretch. Every stop sign, they were, you know, stopping at and going to it all the way over to Fourth Street.
Sixth Street?
Nope, Fourth.
That doesn't go through the Fourth, does it?
Yep. It goes on the south side of St. Mary's.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, they were going past Sixth, which I was a little surprised at, and they were going over to Fourth.
Second affect St. Mary's, kids getting out of there?
Um...
Well, they don't drive.
They don't drive.
All their kids walking and...
Yeah. There's quite a few of them that pick up their kids at St. Mary's. There's a few that do walk. The ones that I've seen walk actually go west, so they cross Fourth and they go to the west.
They're earlier released, though, aren't they?
Hmm, I don't know that for sure.
I think they get out. You're right. They get out of the high school.
That's true.
Because the buses have to go there and then go to the middle school.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, they get out earlier.
Parking lot does clean up a lot quicker.
Yeah.
There's still some lane.
It's deceiving. It's all props.
So like I said, the first day, it took them 23 minutes, and then on the fourth day, it took them 11 minutes. So they figured it out. They figured out how to get out of there a little bit better. You know, we'll get bids on our 2017 projects on Wednesday. To be honest with you, I'm optimistic that we're going to get really good prices. I looked at it today. We had 15 prime contractors listed on the bidders list. That's not to say we're going to get 15 bids, but that's a mitful. We're going to get lots of bids on these, and hopefully, they're all good prices. So we'll see at our 20th meeting how we want to move forward. So I guess, any questions about the one-way and how that would work, or how this would go if we move forward with that? I know we can talk more about it at the 20th meeting, but I figured if we've got some time tonight with the aerial imagery here, we can kind of go through that. That's all I got.
So a letter we got here from Mr. Jones. It looks realistically like the school, and all that in favor of a one-way, 247365.
Correct, correct. Which, I'll be honest, surprised me a little bit. I've had close to half a dozen meetings with them, and at each meeting, they had indicated that they were on board and in favor of this. It does look like they've changed their stance a little bit, and they would like to see just a controlled intersection there for 30 minutes out of the day. My personal opinion on it, or my recommendation, is a sign's not going to change anything, but if they would like to put up a sign, I would guess that's their prerogative. We've seen how well a sign works at the middle school parking lot. If it doesn't, the first car that comes from the south to go across and go north, you're going to have four or five cars that are going to follow it because there's no way for enforcement, law enforcement, to know where he came from. Did he, you know, did they park in that horseshoe up by the high school and come around? Did they park in the high school parking lot? It's not going to be enforceable from our perspective, so that sign really is not going to do anything. We did have, another example is, we did have a water main dig over on Lindbergh Drive South just last week, and we had the whole road blocked off. You could see it for two blocks in advance, and this was a young driver, I think he was 16 or 17 years old, inexperienced, just like the high schoolers here. I believe that's where he was going to, and he blew right through that at quarter to eight in the morning, through, you know, barricades that stand this tall, three across. He blew right through one of them at quarter to eight. We're lucky we didn't have anybody in the area, but you could see those barricades for two blocks, and he totally missed it. So if a sign is, I'm very doubtful that's going to work, but if that's the route that they want, obviously, we want to work with the school and kind of in conjunction and cooperation with the Ninth Street. If that's the route that they so choose, then I guess that's the position that they're taking in. As a council, I think you have to listen to it. I mean, they're obviously half of the property along there. You know, it's still my recommendation that the best route for that, if you want to have a safe zone for the school and to improve the traffic, you know, both here and up there, a one-way would be the route to go, but I also understand your decision and the things you've got to weigh in when you're making those decisions.
Well, the thing is, it's a half a million dollar experiment.
True.
If a sign works. If a sign solves 90% of it, if we get 90% of them to turn left out of that school...
I don't think you'll get 90%. I think you'll get 10.
Maybe we could wheel a gate out there every day.
They could.
Put a power one in that.
There you go.
But the stop strips, just like at the airport, they come up, 3 o'clock.
If they start buying tires, they'll turn the other way.
They'll figure it out.
Can't have guns in town.
I know.
Any other questions?
Are there, I don't know if I've seen it here, but I remember seeing in Pierce, it was near the parochial school, there were certain times that they'd have a metal bar out over the road, and you couldn't go in that part, and part of the time, it was in and it was a road. Is that something that the, and the school took care of it? Is that something that they could do?
Lincoln School's got it. Lincoln School blocks up the street.
Why can't they do that at 2:30 and take it down at 4 o'clock, or whatever the time they need?
I think that's what I just said.
You were with the power gate. You weren't the swing gate, though.
Well, I'm thinking less expensive. Somebody walks out and then they run into it, it's less to fix.
Yeah, they do it in the morning at Lincoln, they close the three streets off and...
That won't cost $500,000.
Depends on how nice the gates are. Depends on what kind of study it's in. We could do a survey.
I will say, this is a pretty wide street, so it would have to be a pretty big gate to get across, even if you had to.
Guess we'll discuss all this at our next meeting.
Next meeting.
Only needs to go halfway across the road.
Not solving anything tonight.
What's our study? Okay. Anything else from staff? John, got anything exciting?
If you were wondering where I was, I was talking to the haulers. We do have some things that we've discussed potentially, but it's, they wanted to make sure that they look and verify with their numbers, but I will be contacting you by an email when I get that information, hopefully by Wednesday. So I'm out of the office all day tomorrow at a conference, so...
You think they know their books by now, as much as they've been working on this?
Just want to double-check.
Yeah, verify. Anything else from staff?
I've talked enough.
Council got anything?
No.
917, we'll adjourn. Poor thing.